All right. The time is 6:00 PM. It is September 24th, 2025, and I am calling our regular school board meeting to order. Could I please have Clerk Milner take attendance?
Director Biermeyer?
Here.
Director Michael Mulder?
Here.
Director Zuzek?
Here.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Here.
Chair Tate?
Here.
Director Brunz?
Here.
Director Milner, here.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask all who are able to please stand and remove your headwear for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, I am looking for a motion on the agenda, please.
Zuzek motions to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second, please?
Biermeyer's seconds.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye for approving the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda. And now, I would like to welcome our two new student school board representatives forward. We have Avery Durfee and Shyla Henson. Welcome. So come on up and stand wherever you're comfortable there. And I will ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge
the duties of student school board representative
The duties of school board representative.
Serving independent school district 200
Serving independent school district 200
to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
All right, welcome. You can sign your oath of office and have a seat. Yep. Yep. I'm all about it. So I'd also like to welcome our other student representatives back for their second year of their term here. We have Jen Banky and Aiden Suarez-Garcia. And so I'll start with you guys first. If you wouldn't mind, just reintroduce yourselves and let us know what you're involved in this year and all your interests and whatnot. And then also which schools you're going to be handling this year as well.
All right. So I'm Jen Banky. This is my second year on the board. And at the school, I'm involved in almost all of the band programs we have. I'm in the marching band as the drum major this year. I'm in the pep band. I'm going to be in the backup band for the show choir. And I'm also involved in youth and government and Model UN. And I'm involved in NHS. And I'm involved in track on the RSD team. And I think that's it.
Are you sure that's it?
I'm not sure. Maybe. We'll find. Wow. Oh, and I'm representing the middle school this year.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Student Representative Suarez Garcia. I'm in Yig. I'm going to be in Mun, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, tennis, soccer, show choir, Riverside specifically. That's all that comes to mind right now. There's more, but we'll get back to that at a later date. And I'm representing the ALC and the high school this year.
All right, thank you. All right. And then, of course, we want to learn about our new representatives as well.
Hi, I'm Student Representative Henson. I am involved in a lot of the Yig stuff. I also do Mun. I do a lot with Spanish. I'm on the Spanish Club Mesa, which is our like officer thing. I'm also in Spanish Honor Society, which I'm super excited to start. And I do, I am also in Feminism Club, which I also enjoy. And I am looking forward to start doing more things in school. And I am representing Tilden and the Kennedy.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Student Representative Durfee, and I will be representing McCullough and Pinecrest. And at HHS, I am a part of our Youth and Government program, as well as obviously the student school board. And I'm also this year in Riverside Company for the Hastings High School Show Choir. The last two years, I've been a part of the dynamic addition.
Awesome. Welcome, you guys. All right, so officially, we will restart our student reports next month. So we'll hear from all of you and hear about all the cool things going on in the buildings from you next month. So
Chair Tate?
Yes.
A quick question, if I might?
Go ahead.
What is Mun? A couple of you mentioned Mun, and that's one I haven't heard of yet.
Mun is Model United Nations. Yeah, we get together for a mock conference and we just model the United Nations for a weekend. It's really fun.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions? All right. Next up, we have, actually, I should say, sorry, welcome to everyone in the room. Thank you for joining us both physically and online. And for those who will be watching this in the future, we appreciate your engagement in Hastings Public Schools. And next up, we have the Raider Spotlight.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge tonight Ms. Marissa Welch. She was actually awarded the Assistant Coach of the Year. She was unable to be here tonight because they're playing. So this is how this works. They had a rain out and they had to reschedule. And so she initially thought she could be here. But she did send us some comments of hers, and I'd like to read them for everyone. "Thank you so much for the honor and recognition in tonight's meeting. With the recent rain, I was not able to attend tonight as we had to reschedule our match in Moda Medai. Our varsity girls tennis team is currently competing against one of our top competitors in the conference. As with most coaches, especially within our esteemed team of coaches in Hastings, recognition is not what coaching is about. For me, it is an opportunity to share my love of sports and develop the whole person. It is in moments that display and teach positivity, authenticity, grit, and service. This is what you will hear on the tennis courts as I introduce myself and continue to uphold all season long, and it is what you will see in the avid classroom at school. It is my coaching purpose statement that we as coaches and teachers have spent time developing through Inside Out Coaching Initiative with Joe Airman. I was given this opportunity to coach at Hastings when Tom Johnson, the previous AD, hired me. I have continued in this role 10 years later under Trent's leadership of immense intentionality and willingness to bring us coaches and our athletes together under our Raider values. Sports are a unique opportunity for kids to learn so much more than just the Xs and Os of their game. They are also exposed to learning resiliency, friendship, leadership, competition, and fun, to name a few. And these don't always necessarily occur in the classroom. It brings an amazing blend for a student athlete to give their all in the classroom and then, at the end of the day, come out to the courts, fields, mats, pools, and represent their same high school in sports. I'm so thankful our high school offers as many sports as we do and the relationships the coaches have within our sports to create a unified, awesome experience with our continued motivation for our student athletes. Our athletes are phenomenal. As you see in Trent's newsletters, our athletes consistently rank with high GPAs, high participation rates and retentions, high honors of conference, MVPs, state participants, and champions, all academic award winners, and the list goes on. I am ever so grateful and humbled to be one of those many coaches serving our student athletes in two of our seasons. Thank you again for this time and recognition."
So thank you and congratulations, Marissa Welch. Not everyone gets to be Coach of the Year. That's very impressive.
So next, I would like to announce that this is the School Board Appreciation Month. And I want to extend my heartfelt thank you to all of the school board members, including our student members. This can be a thankless job. I don't know that maybe community members may or may not realize the amount of time that you put in attending events, yes, but also the many committee meetings, the emails, the being called. I'm calling you on the phone some weekends, lots of opportunities to connect. But I just want to thank you because sometimes it can maybe feel a little bit like a thankless job. And I don't want you to ever feel that way. I want you to know that for myself, our entire team, we're very grateful. And I think we're a high-functioning board, and it's a really, really good place to be. So thank you so much. And I have certificates and pins I'm going to hand out. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And yes, it can be a thankless job, but I will say it's very rewarding. So
Now, we do have also a video that I would like to show. And this is one that MSBA has put out as a thank you to all the board members. And this one is a student voice. And I just think it was really well done. And it says a lot for how I think students across our state feel.
So we have an issue with, we have a technical issue right now?
Oh, no.
We'd love to show that video.
I will, if we can later tonight, we will. Otherwise, we'll show it at the next meeting. But it is wonderfully done. But thank you again, everyone, for the time and effort that you put in. And it does, we really value it and need the voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Director Biermeyer?
I would also like to say I am so proud to be working with this group. I've worked with a lot of different people in different committees and in different rooms and had to make a lot of decisions. I think this is one of the most professional groups I've ever been a part of. And I appreciate all of you. And I take everything I learned from you, and I appreciate it. And everybody here is passionate, committed, and we want to excel. And I'm grateful to be working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, we have public comment, but we do not have anyone signed up for public comment tonight. So we will move right into reports and discussions and starting with the superintendent's report.
Okay, so just a few things here. Monday, we had a staff development day. And so students weren't here, but teachers were in different sessions, learning. Early childhood focused on their work with creative curriculum. Elementary focused on the new Amplify Science curriculum, along with continued work on the new UFLI literacy curriculum. Middle school and high school had many choice sessions, and they did a lot of curricular alignment work. Very excited and pleased that Director Hodges is working diligently to work through this alignment piece. It's hard, and everything changes all the time. And that's a continuous work we always do. But he's really leading that work, and I think we'll find positive outcomes from that. And then teachers also had a session with Bethany von Steinberg's on the strengths focusing on collaboration for this particular day. And I want to also say, we have homecoming this week. So I want to welcome everyone to all of our different activities. So last Saturday night was the marching band show. And I want to say congratulations to those kids. I said I was so excited. I had to hug the band director, which probably thought is crazy. But I was so excited, tears in my eyes. It was so good. The sound was wonderful. And it was really fun. I would suggest that people don't miss that event. Also, FCA had a volleyball tournament on Sunday, so staff were able to play against students. I know they had a great time with that. Powderpuff was on Monday night. I was able to stop by there. That was exciting. I think the junior class one? Was it a senior class? Okay, yeah. Boy, I shouldn't have said that wrong. Probably get upset, right? I did see a couple of really good passes, so I was excited about that. So it was really fun. We had soccer on Tuesday, girls and boys at home. And then on Thursday, tomorrow night, we have volleyball at home. So if you can get an opportunity to see the girls. And I believe they're doing a staff appreciation. So the volleyball girls will get to choose a staff person to acknowledge and thank for their support. And then, of course, Friday night, we have the football game that begins at 6:30 PM. So I hope to see everyone there. And Saturday night is our homecoming dance. And that will be taking place in the high school commons beginning at 8:00 PM. So a lot happening. We have dress up days. We'll have our court, homecoming court be announced on Friday. So lots of really fun activities. And it's fun because even the elementary kids are getting into this, and they have their own dress up days. And it's really fun. And we had good participation in some of those. I've been into the buildings, and it's been fun. So that's about all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Yes, my daughter dressed up as a soccer mom today. So she had fun with that. All right, so next up, we have a presentation by Mr. Willett. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, I'm Nick Willett. I'm a language arts teacher at the high school. And yeah, I brought in a couple of my wonderful students, Mara and Travis, who were two of 36 students to join me and some other wonderful folks for a trip to Ireland and England. And the Vikings are copying us, as you can tell. But yeah, we just wanted to swing by and promote international student travel. That's kind of got back in the swing of things this year. I know the French program took a trip this year, and the band program had a wonderful, wonderful trip as well to Greece. And just thought Mara and Travis would maybe want to share a little bit about the experience and just some of the positive elements of the trip. And hoping to do more.
I'll go first. So we spent most of our time in Ireland. And Ireland was probably my favorite part of the trip. We had a lot of free time to just wander around and meet people. And so we got to spend some free time in Dublin. And that was probably one of my favorite days because we just got to go around and talk to people. And everybody was really nice. And they were asking us a lot of questions about where we were from. And we were able to learn a lot from them. So that was probably my favorite, other than we went to London. And a small group of us picked, instead of having free time in London, to go see a musical on the West End. And that was really fun.
All right. So the trip to Ireland was one of the best things that I could have ever experienced in my lifetime, still being in school. So we've been, or we were outside, like basically all day, every day. And, you know, here, I'm not exactly outside most of the time. So it was, it kind of like opened my eyes to like what's outside of the world. Like, it was so beautiful, like lots of mountains. I don't know if the weather was good, like natural weather, but it was a lot of, it was cloudy. The mountains were beautiful, a lot of green nature. We went to tons of castles. The Blarney Castle was one of my favorites. I didn't kiss the stone because it was, looked too scary for me. And then during London, one of my favorites, like absolute favorite thing that I did was went to, did some karaoke with two of my other friends. It was probably one of the best highlights of that trip so far. So yeah.
As you can hear, it's just great to see students step out of their comfort zone and just, you know, really gain such confidence in their ability to navigate difficult situations and problem solve. But just the community that was built, it was one of the coolest things was there were groups of students when we got home who weren't really friends before the trip, but they started hanging out after the trip. Just that communal aspect is really, really huge for me. So just so many positive things about international travel. So this was the first time I led a trip, and it went incredibly well. I'm excited to hopefully do it again. So just thank you to the district for supporting international travel and putting trust in us to make it happen. So.
All right, do we have any questions?
Being in language arts, did you go to any of the Shakespeare in the Park when you were in England?
We went to Shakespeare's birthplace. And just kind of an unexpected treat was performances outside of their little 15-minute performances. I stayed there for like three in a row. They kept doing different scenes of some of my favorite plays. And that was a peak performance for me, seeing my students. We had Red Macbeth. And that was the first scene they were doing when we came out. And the kids were whispering to each other, oh, this is the scene where Macbeth is feeling deep guilt for his murder of Duncan. And it was just, I almost started tearing up. I was just like, here they are experiencing Shakespeare in London. And they knew what was going on. So it was awesome.
Any other questions? Yeah, Director Brunz?
They did Macbeth, which is like a big no-no, right? Every theater company in the world, don't touch Macbeth. Only bad things happen. As an educator, as you, because there's a ton of value in this, how do you see pathways to make it more equitable or accessible for folks that maybe have different means or come from a different walk of life?
Yeah, that's a great question. The tour group we partner with is called Education First Tours, and they've been at this for 60 years. And that's a huge part of their mission. That was one of the first things they talked to me about is take two years to plan. So students have time, who aren't necessarily able to do student travel like this on their own, to have time to, you know, save up money. And they have, you know, essentially like a GoFundMe set up on their page where grandparents and anyone, instead of giving Christmas gifts, could donate to their trip. And it just sounds like that's the sort of thing grandparents especially love, to feel like they're a part of something, and then they know they help support this for students. One of our chaperones is an expert at fundraising and set up opportunities for our students for, you know, working concessions at Twins Games for a couple of different organizations that they know about. And the Raise Right Program is a way where you can, it's an app where you can get a percentage towards educational opportunities for things you'd buy anyway, like gas or Home Depot. So.
Kind of working? I don't
Can you hear?
Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Little technical glitch. We're all good. We're good now. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our Building Construction Fund project update with Ms. Hubert.
Thank you. So just a reminder that the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds. And we use the money for school renovations and improvements. We are continuing to close out projects. So an additional project closed out this last month was the radio replacement project. Those are the radios that our staff have or the walkie-talkies that they use on a daily basis. So currently, in our unallocated funds, we have about $399,000. And we are holding on to that money to make the arbitrage payment that will be due. And then overall, in the fund, there are three accounts or three projects that are still in process. And then kind of one miscellaneous one for flexible learning furniture that has about $17,000 left in it. So overall, the account has $557,000 approximately.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to our next item, we have the data request update from Ms. Moon.
Good evening. Since last board meeting, we have had three data requests, none of them from anonymous. We are in the process of all three of them. Yet one of them, we are anticipating going out by the end of the week. And we did not have any costs related to data requests with legal fees this month.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Cheers, yes. Next up, we have our school board committees and liaison reports. First up is from ISD 917 with Director Zuzek.
Real quick, one of the things that interested me the most in looking over that agenda, that it's not an agenda, it's the board notes after the board meetings happen. But after looking over it, this is the lowest number of hires that we've had right at the end of summer, which really speaks well to the hiring process. You know, at 917, because of particularly the ESPs or Educational Support Professionals, we're just hiring feverishly. And it's one of the lowest lists that you'll see. I mean, as compared to Hastings, that's probably a pretty daunting list. But remember that every student has very high needs in the special ed programs at 917.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, moving along, we have the AMSD update from Director Brunz.
Yeah, and I'll turn your attention to the two guest speakers that were present at the beginning of the month. But the Purpitch Center was there, and then they also shared some survey results. But it's important to know that the Purpitch Center is an entire library of professional development that's available to our staff. So if they see things within the arts that they want to dive into, all of that is available. There's a catalog, and it's free, free, free. Everybody wants something for free. And it's really well done. I know that in my experience, I've leaned on them to help curate a more arts-embedded education where possible. And then the survey data was really interesting. There's a lot. It's really dense on information. But some of the key points I want to highlight, people perceive property taxes to be too high. Color me shocked, like that most people would perceive that their taxes are too high. But they would be more willing to incur a $100 increase if they knew that that money was going directly to the school districts. And greater than a super majority would approve a 1% income tax increase if it meant that they could decrease their property taxes as far as how it's attributed to public education, which is really incredible. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Next up, we have our Community Collaboration Committee update with Director Milner.
Yeah, we met on September 16th and set our dates for the upcoming rest of the school year. So our first event will be October 2nd at 6:00 PM in the Hastings High School Lecture Hall. And we'll feature a meet and greet with Dr. Christine and also showcasing the Anatomage Table. So if you haven't heard about this yet, excellent, excellent opportunity for our students. We are the first high school in Minnesota to have one. I think it's Ellie Gullicks is doing most of the work at the high school, but they're teaching now a health-centered class to help students determine if they're going to be wanting to go into a healthcare field. And so that table will be available for the public who would like to come see literally live cadavers, where you can kind of peel away the layers and see things all digitally on this table. And so I'm super excited to see that. We got to experience that at the Minnesota School Board Association Conference in January. And I was excited about it being in the healthcare career myself. I was really hopeful of that. So we had some amazing fundraising happen in our community, and that table happened. So come, check that out, meet our new superintendent. It's going to be a great time. So please join us. The next one will be January 12th. And then the following one has been determined to be April 1st. And I put that our committee is going to meet on October 22nd. We found out that date is busy, so we're going to have to talk and redo that date. But that's where we're at right now. but that's where we're at right now.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Sounds good. Next up is Facilities Finance and Joint Powers Committee update with Director Zuzek.
We have not had a meeting since the last one, so there's no notes, but I'm just remembering that we left the date of our next meeting undecided because there were three of the city people that weren't there. And so I'll check back in with Dan and see if, Dan would teach you from the city, to see if they've picked a date for it. And they were going to pick, I believe, Monday or, no, Friday. Monday, a Monday, yeah.
I think it may have been scheduled for October 27th.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I saw an invite, but.
I'm going to wait then.
Hundred percent.
I'll check that, thanks.
But yes, end of October regardless is when it was being planned for. And then just one thing I would like to add, we had mentioned this at our last meeting, the Joint Powers Agreements, they are still being worked on by legal departments. So we are not seeing them yet as a board, but the hope is that we will have them for our October work session to talk through and then vote on at the October meeting. So that's where that's at. Next up, we have NAPAC Committee update from Director Brunns.
Yeah. In low-hanging fruit, the ball like this, it maybe feels like the least important, it's very cool, especially as the group evolves, but they approached a Perry Island artist to design a logo for the Hastings NAPAC. If you're wondering what their portfolio is, it's the same artist that designed the Native American Heritage Night baseball bats for the Minnesota Twins. So if you saw those earlier in the season, it is that artist. And that quote came in a lot more reasonable than I would have considered, like being somewhat familiar with what a graphic design quote would be, it was very favorable. We walked through Indigenous Peoples' Day with that coming up. They want to target less large things that feel like one-offs and unimportant, but target that instruction throughout the day. So Director Hodges is working with different lessons from MDE and other libraries that embed Indigenous education throughout the day. And they're also talking about a scope that would take in maybe even an entire week or if you wanted to move those asks, those organizations that come out for the big things are all tapped. Everyone wants them on Indigenous Peoples' Day. So if you shift that, have them come in the week before and set the tone, like we're going to set our learning up and then walk that through the week, that that might be a progression in future years, but really making it intentional on that day. I do want to highlight the work of Alyssa Cherry last year. I know that she's not with us anymore, but we did highlight that there were 30 students last year that were now properly identified as Native American in our system. That unlocks both funding and then programming opportunities for students, which is incredible. They talked about PD offered by TNIC, so there's going to be a professional development session that TNIC is hosting October 27th through the 28th with a focus on strategic plans and how it impacts Indigenous students. Robbinsdale, St. Paul and ISD 196 are going to be presenters because they're considered high flyers, like this is going very well, our partnership and what we're doing with programming. And there's a new director of Indian Ed at MDE and that's Annie Huberty is really strong in that role as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Great. Next up, we have our Student School Board Committee update from, again, Director Brunns.
They're here, y'all. Yeah, our last meeting was really talking about the individualized onboarding process. I just want to thank you all stepping in the fray again for a second here, jumping in this time. I think your work is really invaluable and it's very important for us to know what's going on, but also bring that perspective to the table because we're old, like we are just out of touch sometimes and that's, and that's okay. Knowing your blind spots is a power and having you to fill it in is a good thing too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our Policy Committee update with Vice Chair Dressley.
So the Policy Committee met three times this month and for first reading, we have policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings, and this was due to a recent change in the Minnesota open meeting law, saying that board members can attend board meetings with more flexibility through video conferencing. There are a couple of requirements that we must follow to be able to do this, but just so everybody's clear, we're not ready to do this yet. There's still some stuff that needs to be worked out with HCTV and Lindy, so. But we're recommending this for first reading today. Any questions? Okay, policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. The previous version of this policy was heavily saturated with language taken directly from Minnesota statute, US code and federal regulation. The proposed update is written in plain language while still maintaining the statutory and regulatory requirements. Policy 613, which is our graduation requirements, this was an annual review policy. The committee updated, well, I won't read through all, you can see it on the document, on our summary document, but we're also recommending this one for first reading. Okay, in adherence to our three-year policy review cycle, the Policy Committee began working on the 700 series policies. There are three new policies on our agenda for first reading tonight and they're the MSBA model policies. 701, establishing, adopting and modifying school district budget, and that one is a combination of MSBA's model policy 701 and 701.1. 702, accounting. 703, annual audit. Like I said, these will all be new policies to our district. Policy 706, acceptance of gifts, there were no recommended revisions, but since this is on our review cycle, we're still marking it and going through the three reading process. Any questions on any of the first readings? Second reading, policy 602 is on the agenda for second reading. We're going to have a more robust discussion, which will take place during our October work session, when each of the principals will provide details about the building level e-learning plans. So it's just on here for awareness. 602.1, inclement weather and e-learning plan, again, we'll be discussing that at our work session in October. For fourth reading tonight, we are policy 601, school district curriculum and instructional goals. There's only one additional revision in Section 5C and it was to align our instructional and curriculum with what the board adopts as curriculum. And because this is new language, because the new language is substantive, we are recommending fourth reading and then next month it'll be in the consent agenda for adoption. We have no policies for adoption tonight.
Can I comment further? I just, I don't, you wouldn't have said this yourself, Director Dressley, but I just want to comment that away from the table from the Policy Committee, Jessica Dressley does a lot of work on policies and works sample language for us to look at and consider so that those policy meetings don't go longer than they already do and we don't have even more of them than what we already do. And recently, an example of this was there was a policy that would have been in the mid-'40s, like 45 something pages, and it's down to the high '20s, like 27 pages. And that's because of redundancies and the policy was full of important, but not plain language. It was written, a lot of it was written in state statutes, just copied from state statutes. And it's that careful eye that saves a lot of time and makes the policies more cohesive, more coherent. Yeah, and I just, I want to express my gratitude for that. It's been, we're almost through with our three-year cycle and we were talking, as we were leaving our last policy meeting, how much we're looking forward to starting on the second three-year cycle, when we're looking at our own previous work instead of the work that we have before. And just as an example, I'll comment that there's policies that have been done by Director Dressley and the Policy Committee that we're sending back to MSBA and saying, hey, I think this is probably better than your model language and we hope that you'll consider taking it on. And I know that they're heeding a lot of our advice, so thanks a lot, Jessica.
Thank you.
I was going to say something along the same lines, so thank you for saying that so eloquently. Yeah, we had three policy meetings this month, right? And that's a lot and there is so much preparation that she does, like Director Zuzek mentioned, it's a crazy amount of work that she's doing and, you know, I'll give these phone calls. So I just ran across this policy and it says this in the statute and this in the, and I'm like, whoa, okay, back up. You know, she's just on it and she just knows it and it's just, it's amazing. So thank you for all your work and time and effort that goes into that.
I'd like to also comment, she even knows the statute's my number from memory. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness, so yeah, it's wonderful.
She's woken up in her sleep stating statute.
It's going to be on our license plate, our favorite one will be on our license plate.
Pretty much. So thank you, Jessica. All right, any questions, comments, anything on the policies that we rapid-fired through there? All right, sounds good. Next up, we are going on to our action items and the first thing is the consent agenda. Could I please get a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second, please?
Milner, second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda. All right, now we are on to our individual action items and first up, we have a donation acceptance resolution. I'm looking for a motion on this item, please.
Director Brunns will make a motion to approve, or to accept the donations towards the district.
Waiving the reading or no?
I would love to waive the reading.
I will second that motion, Dressley.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk Milner, could you please take roll call vote, please?
Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Director Michael Mulder.
Aye.
Director Zuzek.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunns.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
Thank you. All right, next up we have the max levy limitations item. I am looking for a motion on this item, please.
I make a motion to approve the max levy as stated in the document.
Can I get a second, please?
Michael Mulder, seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the max levy limitations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have our Eagle Bluff trip approval. I'm looking for a motion on this item, please.
I make a motion to approve it. I'm well aware of the trip and the work that goes into planning it.
Brunns will second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the Eagle Bluff trip, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the Eagle Bluff trip. Next up, we have the MSBA proposed resolution regarding investing in career pathways in technical education. Could I get a motion on this item, please?
Director Biermeyer would like us to vote on a yes to the proposed changes and approval of the resolution.
Michael Mulder, seconds.
All right, any discussion?
I just want to tip a hat again to Dressley. You, I went in there and I went, there's an email that was sent over, I'm going to go tinker around and it's like, oh wow, okay, this looks amazing. The citations back and forth between statute and desired outcomes and data is incredible. Thank you.
Yes, if anyone ever needs any help with statute and writing things, right over here. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the resolution. So, and I will note, this is due tonight into MSBA. Could I get a volunteer to submit that, please? Vice Chair Dressley, thank you very much. Yep, appreciate that. All right, so again, we submitted, for the folks who don't know, we submitted, what did we do last time? Five resolutions plus this one, six. So we've got, we proposed and approved six resolutions for the Minnesota School Boards Association Delegate Assembly to go forward to that assembly to then vote on, to decide if they are going to put that forward as a part of their legislative platform. So that's what this is all about. All right, next up, we have our Brightworks Annual Renewal Approval. Could I get a motion on this item, please?
I made a motion to approve the Brightworks contract.
Michael Mulder, seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the Brightworks contract, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the Brightworks, the Brightworks contract. Sorry, I'm already looking ahead. All right, next we have the 2025 Resolution Appointing Election Judges. Could I get a motion on this item, please?
Director Biermeyer would like us to vote yes on the resolution appointing election judges. Vote November 4th.
Michael Mulder, seconds.
And I believe I have to, I can't vote on this, right? I can't. I cannot, okay. So I'm abstaining from this vote because I'm not on this list, so I cannot vote for or against this.
I would like to amend the motion to waive the reading. Is that, make a friendly amendment? Is that all right? I don't think, I don't think anyone wants to read all these names individually. All right, well done. All right, any further discussion? Okay, Director Milner, could you please take a roll call vote?
Director Biermeyer.
Aye.
Director Michael Mulder.
Aye.
Director Zuzek.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley. Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunns.
Aye.
And Director Milner.
Aye.
All right, and I would like to say thank you to everyone who is volunteering to be election judges. We appreciate your time in doing that for this election. All right, and finally, we have our future meetings. So we have our, oh, sorry, clicked off too soon. So next up, we have the Community Collaboration Event, as was mentioned earlier this evening, on October 2nd at 6:00 PM. We have the Policy Committee meeting on October 3rd at noon and that is in the District A, or District Office Conference Room. October 8th, we have our work session and please note that that is starting at 5:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM for that meeting. And at that meeting, we're going to be working on our vision card. We're going to review what we have in there for metrics and working, talking about a revamping of that scorecard. Then we will have our principals reports. We have shifted the timing a bit. They're going to be in October, January, March and June going forward. Then we will hopefully have our civic arena contract that again is with our attorneys right now. As mentioned earlier this evening, hopefully we'll have those joint powers agreements and addendums to look through and talk through and everything. And then we also have an update from Tahoe that we'll be talking through. Sorry. Then we have, sorry, that one. Then on October 22nd, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we have a closed retreat for school board members. We're going to be working with Barb Dorn from MSBA on our superintendent's goals and goal process and all that kind of stuff, even though we've got it pretty buttoned up. We are going to have a brief session with her on that and then we will roll into our board meeting at 6:00 PM right here. And we are going to, again, we're going to be voting on that vision card that I mentioned earlier. We'll be getting progress updates from our superintendent on her goals. We will, as I mentioned earlier, be restarting our student reports. Hopefully, we will see that civic arena contact, contract and those joint powers agreements to vote on. And then we will also have a resolution appointing substitute election judges for the election. And then also we'll be talking through and voting on a joint powers agreement with Dakota County Public Health. So that's what we've got going on for the next month and that's it. And then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Michael Mulder moves to adjourn.
Milner, second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to adjourn at 6:49 PM.